Is it raining?
Yes, ma'am.
Unbelievable.
Oh, my goodness. All right. Have a good meeting.
Is that where you want it? It's like a.
Okay, you put on one broken umbrella. You have broken umbrellas. Which is in my phone calendar. So, yes. Absolutely. I'm still waiting up. I'm gonna be sure I won't be frozen. I don't know. We've kind of frozen already. You want to lower? So, two more minutes to go.
This is my seat.
Oh.
The July twenty second special meeting of the Lockshead Grows Town Council will now come to order. Oh, I need my microphone. If I could have, we could all stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
New States of America and to the republic where which stands.
And I'm sure that everybody's aware, but if we could just do a moment of silence for Jojo Milano. She was a lady who lived over in the Hickridge and she was a huge animal lover advocate, resource for anybody who had any questions about any kind of farm animal. And she passed this week after a lot of suffering, especially goats. After a lot of suffering, so if we could just recognize her. Thank you.
Okay, Valerie, could I have a roll call?
Councilmember Coleman?
Here.
Councilmember El Rey me?
Here.
Councilmember McLendon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Herzog?
Here.
Tending via Zoom. Mayor Kane?
Present.
Town manager Romalia?
Here.
Town Attorney Torcivia?
Here.
Is appearing via Zoom. Public Works Director Gallant is not with us today.
Okay. We're ready for public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any of those tonight?
Yes, Ms. Standish.
Hmm, it's not picking up. No. Okay.
Richard's the mic guy.
Virginia Standish, one five four one zero North Road. Okay. First, I'd like to thank the Plaza and the town for correcting the death trap at B Road and Southern Boulevard. It is now a pleasure driving, trying to come back to Lockshead Grows. I would encourage you to work with Publix to get them to make a left-hand turn out of the northern side.
You're talking about like the pork chop and everything is really working?
The pork chop is working great. Nobody's tried to kill. I have not been, has seen anyone almost duck, get killed at that intersection trying to go out. I do realize it's hard for people going west. They don't know there's other exits out of Publix to go west and some of them keep coming out. But that's been, it's just a major improvement, just wonderful. So then the other issue is again, Publix, the northern exit where you can only turn right. It'd be great if people who live in the community could be allowed to use that to go back into Lockshead Grows. The other thing I would encourage council, if you have not watched the most recent ULDC or the July seventh code enforcement meeting, please do. Over the years, I have asked in council meetings, what staff does in commercial properties if there's issues. And I recall one time Andrew responding. He was a code enforcement officer saying, yes, when we go into commercial properties along southern, we see an issue. The town works on it. So I see a pattern of inconsistency and how codes are enforced in the commercial properties over the years. And at this particular ULDC meeting, one staff member, and again, the meeting was about signs, but one committee member did ask, can code not go out and enforce the sign, you know, the issues now? And the response was, well, yes, they could if council agreed to make this proactive. So I was confused because over the years I've heard different things where code could go into some areas. So there's just some different information that goes back and forth over the years on existing signs in the commercial area if they can be addressed in what is required by council. The other thing that caught my attention then was the discussion of amortization process and needing an impact study. Amortization sounds like it would reset everything so people who've been in violation are no, you know, are given a shorter window to correct their issues. The need for an impact study was not explained to my satisfaction, listening as a resident. So I'm just curious if y'all could give the public more information on that when you get it to understand how our dollars are being spent. But the thing that really caught my attention was when it was mentioned there are vested properties. I do have never heard of one vested property being approved. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Then I guess we're on to the regular agenda item number one.
May I read the?
We need to approve the agenda. I'm sorry. I need to pay a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Yeah, well, let's.
I'm making a, making a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Thank you, Marge, for reminding me you were there. Passes five to zero. Okay, now we can move on to item number one, which is our only agenda item tonight.
Mayor, would you like me to read the resolution title into the record?
Please.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Lockshead Grows, Florida, appointing Jeffrey S. Kurtz as squire to be employed as the town attorney and providing for an effective date.
Okay, who's taking the lead on this item?
So I will, since I was tasked with trying to work this out with Jeff. We had some of the issues that came up last time we were here. Severance pay was one of the big issues. We decided going in-house didn't work and we would have an issue with severance. I didn't like the fact that there were extra benefits in his contract that were not afforded to other employees. And him and I sat down, we worked through those issues and we came up with a very simple agreement where there is no contract, there's no severance pay. He's treated like the vast majority of the employees here when it comes to benefits and whatnot. And I think we came up with a pretty good solution as to how to move forward with in-house attorney.
Okay. Anybody have any, anything they want to say?
Yeah, I have several questions. I would, I had asked Mr. Kurtz earlier if he would provide the answers to the same questions that the applicants were posed in the advertisement. And I got a call back this afternoon and I asked him to answer these questions this evening. So.
Okay. Did you want to ask the questions?
Oh, well, some of them don't apply because description of organization size, lead attorney, as well as other assigned attorneys with accompanying resumes, location of primary office. One that would apply would be local government experience, which we're familiar with his time here. But he also would be asked list and describe similar municipal engagement satisfactorily performed within the past three years. If you've served as general counsel, please expressly indicate such for each listed municipal client, any known or potential conflicts, including how the offerer intends to address and resolve, and whether the offerer has been involved in litigation with the last five years or any pending litigation arising out of your performance, and whether the offerer has been involved in any complaints in the Florida bar. I think from a due diligence standpoint, we owe it to that and any potential outside applicants that have relied on our advertisement to get those questions answered.
Does the council want me to respond?
Councilperson El Rey me sent that request a little before nine o'clock this morning. I tried to reach out to, to her this afternoon. And if, you know, to respond, as I understood it, she just wanted to know something about my background. I have been available to the council for the last few years and certainly with respect to this year, this issue the last few weeks. In brief, I was admitted to the Delaware bar in nineteen eighty-four. Also admitted to Pennsylvania and New Jersey. Admitted to Florida in nineteen eighty-six. Been practicing law most of that time. In nineteen eighty-six, I moved from Delaware to Florida, became a member of the in-house city attorney's office in Delray Beach. I was there for three years as an assistant city attorney, at which point in time I became the city attorney. So that was the nineteen ninety to ninety-three time period. After that, I left to open up my own office. And I practiced, and my practice included the doing defense work for some municipalities, doing forfeiture work for some municipalities. I represented boards at various municipalities. I represented clients in front of municipalities in around the nineteen ninety-nine time period. I joined a firm down in Florida, in Fort Lauderdale. Brinkley McNerney is what it was known at, at that time. It became Brinkley Morgan. My principal function with that firm was to assist them as an assistant city attorney for the city of Plantation. Don Lunny was the city attorney. And we worked together on that practice. Shortly after nine eleven was the first meeting that I covered for the village of Wellington as the, the city attorney. I was sitting in at the time for Christine Tatum. Shortly thereafter, I was appointed the city attorney or the village attorney over there. I was still practicing with Brinkley and representing both Plantation and the village of Wellington. I left Brinkley Morgan. I had become a partner there, but I left to join a a Palm Beach County firm. And Glenn Torcivia and I practiced together for, what was it, about six years, Glenn? And I was principally working with the, the village of Wellington, but assisted in the practice with other folks. In about the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen time period, the village of Wellington made a decision to go in-house. I chose not to apply for that in-house position at that point in time. And I ended up leaving Glenn and establishing my own solo practice. Thereafter, I continued to represent some special districts. I've represented clients in front of municipalities. And as for the past three years, my function has been primarily here as the project coordinator, first on a part-time basis and then for the last two years on a full-time basis. So I have been practicing law in one form or another for, oh my gosh, it's forty-plus years. I have been a, I have been the city attorney somewhere for about nineteen or twenty years of that time period. And I have been an assistant city attorney for another five years or so. And I have been practicing and working with municipalities for coming up on thirty-eight years. And all of that, when I left, when I left the firm that I was working with in Wilmington, Delaware to some, I, I wanted to come down to Florida and my, and my wife is a native of Plantation. I left that firm and they had hired my replacement. And one of the things I was working on was a plat. And I thought to myself, and I said this out loud, well, at least I'm never going to have to deal with plats again because I was going to do litigation down here in, in Delaware, in Delray Beach. And lo and behold, thirty-eight years later, I now know something about plats.
Yeah. Any known potential or actual conflicts?
No.
No? Involved in litigation with the last five years or any pending litigation arising out of your performance?
No.
No? And been involved in any complaints with the Florida bar within the last five years arising out of your performance?
No.
No. And thank you for that and thank you, counsel. So when we were here two meetings prior, you had no desire to negotiate down. So kudos, Todd, to negotiating down significantly. What you were standing quite strongly in your position. I would like to understand the resolution versus the contract. And I think that, that's something perhaps Glenn could speak to as far as how that differs in that model from a legal liability standpoint. Who benefits and how from a, from a resolution versus a, an actual contract?
So, Madam Mayor?
No.
What's that?
Go, go.
Lisa Glenn.
Lisa, who asked the question?
Oh, okay. I understand she asked a question. I was just going through the chair. Anyway, when, when Jeff provided me with the resolution, we then, both of us checked the charter and the charter actually requires that the town attorney be employed by contract, by an agreement. So my understanding, and Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially was that Councilmember McLendon really didn't want a contract. And so trying to thread the needle with the requirement of the charter that you have to have a contract. And I believe his desire to just have a resolution. We came up with the solution of basically converting the resolution into a very short contract. And that's why the, towards the bottom of the resolution, it says agreed to and accepted by Mr. Kurtz. And then in one of the whereas clauses, I believe it indicates that, you know, this is an agreement. So this resolution is, is an agreement. I mean, you're turning it into an agreement. I know that's a little unusual. Normally you have a resolution and an agreement attached to it. That might be a little more robust, but this meets the minimum requirements for an agreement. It sets forth, you know, the salary, the compensation. So if you, you know, are comfortable moving forward with the resolution, realize that it is an actual agreement.
Okay. Would that, as a relatively loosely defined agreement on certain terms, are we, are we taking on a greater legal liability under potential termination or other possible future actions that because it's not spelled out in the resolution, we would have a stronger legal position if it was a contract?
This is a lawyer's favorite answer. It depends. And I, I mean that in the sense of, it depends on if the new contract, if the parties agreed, if the, this contract does not make any mention of severance pay. So under Florida law, there would be no severance pay. If you were having, like I said, a, a more robust contract, you would address that directly. You would say clearly there is no severance pay. Or you would say clearly there is severance pay and how much it is. So it depends on what is reached in the agreement. In terms of the terms of this agreement, you know, this says, yeah, pull it up and, and read it. It'll be the town attorney, he'll have a salary of one thirty-five, one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. It talks about him getting all of the benefits in accordance with the part personnel policy of the town. He'll get the same cost of living as the other town employees. You can increase it more than that if you wanted to in your sole discretion. You're going to pay professional dues and subscriptions, like in the Florida bar. And he gets into the Florida retirement system at a senior management class. He's already in the system, I believe, but this would be a senior class, which I think we talked about before. And then he signs it. So it would, you then revert to basic law. So for example, the charter would require four votes, whether you have an agreement or not to, to terminate the attorney. So that would still apply even though it's not laid out in the contract. The no severance would apply even though it's not laid out in the contract. So again, I come back to if you can come to an agreement and remember last time, last two times, there was a difficulty coming together on an agreement. So this is a very, you know, it's a bare bones agreement, but it is an agreement.
Okay. Back to the council. Thank you, Mr. Torcivia. Back to the council. As we consider the hiring of Mr. Kurtz as the town attorney, I've only been sitting here since March and I can't tell you how many times we were told that Mr. Kurtz had been tasked with certain assignments, whether they were policy documentation or ordinances and resolutions that Mr. Torcivia has stated ended up at his legal firm at the last minute to be completed on time. And I know there's been some discussion of moving forward with continuing to interview the applicants that we won't be seeing until next Monday and possibly hiring an outside firm. In addition to, I want to make sure that anything that there's a shortfall with in-house timing and deadlines doesn't end up getting sent out to any kind of outside council to get completed. So job performance, I think, has been something to date that has been lacking in, in Mr. Kurtz's capacities. And I think this whole thing started a year ago under the, the idea that this was going to reduce costs. And I, I say again, this sets the bar at a new height. This does not reduce cost. And it seems to me that this is actually not a cost reduction exercise. It's an employment exercise. And if that's the case, then I think we should drop the ruse that this is actually a cost reduction exercise. So, and lastly stating that the last time Mr. McLendon and Ms. Kane served up here on council, they fired the town attorney and it ended up costing us about a hundred thousand dollars to make that agreement go away. Yeah, Todd, it did.
We didn't fire the town attorney.
I'm sorry, the town manager. My bad. So that, that ended up costing us a hundred thousand. I would be concerned that as we look at this open-ended agreement, that we make sure we put a time limit on this of no more than a year because we want to make sure it's going to work. It's going to work for Mr. Kurtz, it's going to work for the town, and it's not going to be something that ends up costing us money to get out of. Those are my comments. Thank you. So go ahead. Todd, do you, would you like to?
Yeah, I mean, that, and I agree with you about the severance pay and all that. And that's exactly why we've worked to this point. There is no severance. Glenn just confirmed that if it's not in here, then there's no severance. That was the whole point of negotiating and trying to come to some kind of agreement with him. Where if in six months from now, forget about a year, if in six months from now it's not working out, four of us can terminate him on the spot. There is no severance pay. We don't have to give notice, anything like that. So that was kind of the idea why him and I worked together to come up with this agreement.
Well, given his performance to date.
Well.
Hiring him as in-house attorney already seems like one big, you know.
In his, in his, not necessarily in his defense, but we talked about, you talked about, he comes up with a resolution, sends it to the town attorney and it's last minute and they don't get it back and there's finger pointing. Guess what? There won't be finger pointing anymore. Right? He's it. There won't be any finger pointing. The buck stopped with him now. So he can't say it was Glenn or it was this attorney. Or if we hired another firm and he stays in the position he's at, it stops that finger pointing. That no longer can happen. He is the one responsible for any legal matters.
And sets the cost at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
The cost.
I think a little less with the, I was just going to, I was just going to ask, have you, I can just interject, have you run new figures with this is a, this is a lesser salary with a lesser benefits package? You were at three sixty, including in-house counsel and a paralegal previously. Does this reduce the number by any significant amount?
The proposed, the proposed budget on an annualized basis would remain at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars and it includes fifty thousand and change in outside council fees.
So it includes all legal. So I agree with you, after taking another look at it, that it's not necessarily going to reduce legal costs, but it's going to set them. Okay, right now, historically, they've been over four hundred thousand dollars with the firm we're at for the last three years. That's where they've been.
Well, the firm was our firm before the last three years. So there has been a change in the last three years that drove up legal cost. Perhaps there were lawsuits, perhaps there were additional issues that came up that drove them up. But we have seen repeatedly that, and it was provided by our current council, what was driving up legal cost. So I'm concerned that we are setting our cost moving forward at a new high that historically was not the case. Okay. Paul, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions. First, this one's for Glenn. Can, without, you know, three novels, can, can you tell us what the, the pros and the cons versus liability offset for having inside and outside counsel? Because I know there's been some discussion about that around that, that, you know, you actually open yourself up more for inside. You know, you get where I'm. you get where I'm going with my question.
So, so in general, larger cities, I would, I'll say 50,000, 45,000 population will have an in-house attorney. So there's six cities in Palm Beach County that have in-house attorneys. West Palm Beach, Delray Beach, Boynton Beach, Riviera Beach, Wellington and, uh, one other, I can't remember. So, um, and, and the reason is when you become a bigger city, you generally have more complex issues. And all of those cities will have more than one in-house attorney. Wellington started with just Lori as the in-house attorney. I think now they have three. So, uh, this, this, try not to make it three novels, Councilman Paul, the, um, the difficulty is there's no one lawyer, I think, on the face of the earth that knows all the issues that are going to confront the city. That's why Jeff talks about having an outside firm, even if it's at 50,000 a year, and if that's your intention, you should probably have an agreement with that firm that caps it at that number and that they can't go over that number without council approval before they go over that number. Otherwise, it's very easy to go over the number because you do run into complicated issues, complex issues, personnel issues, whatever they happen to be. So it's hard to be a one-person shop. Now, this is an interesting experiment because you are smaller. Maybe it's possible that one attorney, and Jeff has decades of experience, can perform most of the functions and you might not need an outside lawyer that much. That's to be determined. I mean, this is, again, you guys are in, in a little bit of experimental area and it's not the first time Lexet Ju-Groves wants to be a little bold and daring. So, um, I hope that answers your question. That's the, that's the key part is that no one person can do it all. So you're going to need some outside help at some point. The question is, uh, the efficiencies that you're hoping to obtain by having somebody in-house working hand in hand with the management, going to offset any increased fees.
Marge is waving her hand. Yes, Marge.
Yes, I wanted to know, um, does this, uh, agreement, uh, consider any assistance to, um, Mr. Kurtz? Um, what did he call him, paralegals?
Yes, it, well, the whole, I don't think this agreement does, but it was part of the budget item. Yes. The budget number amount that we're talking about, the 360 that we're talking about includes a paralegal and an outs, and $50,000 for outside counsel.
Okay. And that's what Todd had worked on and got in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Todd, you were next.
So one of the things that I discussed today, um, with Francine and Jeff was the fact that there are a lot of pending legal items that have been sitting for a long time. And I'm not saying it's Glenn's fault or Francine, forget about whose fault it is, but there's a lot of legal issues that have been sitting, not getting done. And hopefully we can, with having Jeff here full-time, we can start addressing those things, horse manure, all of the different things, sign codes, right, that went back and forth, all of those things. So if you took those things and let's say Glenn's firm did those in the past year, he'd be at 550,000, right? So there might be cost savings in the fact that we're going to start getting things done that haven't been getting done.
Awesome.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't done.
I'm sorry.
It's, I just, I was just turning my life because I was speaking. So I'll just leave it until I'm done again. Um, all right. So, um, yeah, I, I just, I don't like this. This is the second item that's come before us, that it's like this shotgun, for lack of a better term, shotgun wedding type of scenario. It's, it's this, there's a fire and it's got to happen right now. And it just doesn't seem to me, we said, you know, not too long ago, we want to advertise this and put it out. I guess, you know, maybe not everybody was in agreement with advertising and putting it out, but I, I, you know, you're going to bring somebody from in-house and this is nothing that I haven't said to Jeff. So it's not surprise, but you know, it's, it, if you open a position somewhere and I realize this is a contract position and we don't technically have to, but when you open a position somewhere, usually give time for applicants to apply. You don't put off the advertisement for a week, then advertise it and then have this, this, you know, I, I just, I, I don't, I don't like this hurry up, hurry up, hurry up, you know, I don't, in my mind, and I, I realize Glenn is, he's throwing his hands up and he's done. I get that, but he also said he'd hang out. I, I, you know, I don't know. I, I, I think he would hang out another month if we had, you know, if we were, were working on something.
Actually put the 21st of August as his drop dead at the last meeting, just FYI.
Right. Well, we're in July.
I understand.
Okay. So, so I'm, I'm just saying, we, we, I know it's less than a month, but we, we called a special meeting, wickety split, right? Cause we, we need to do this and I just, I, 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 I don't know of anything, I can't think of anything off the top of my head right now unless there's something that just pops up, like there's a major catastrophe or something that would deem that we have to do this yesterday. And this is the way it's been treated and I, I, I just want to go on record as saying, I, I don't agree with the way it was treated. So, but we're here to make a decision and we're here to, we're here to vote on. So, but I, I, to, to say that, that, somebody made a comment about the, the cost not going over 330, it's going to be 330. I just did some quick math and correct me, you know, or forgive me if I'm wrong. But if we bring Mr. Kurtz in $5,000 over the original, and I know we're not negotiating, but I just want to put this out there. Uh, $5,000 of the initial ask tomorrow, because that's what it states. That, and he's eligible for COLA. So if we increase the COLA 6% this year, just say that happens, that raises another 8100, so he's 143 before 26 even happens. Right? So 26, say we do another 6% because we're staying in line with everybody, that, that bumps to 151. That's another 8500, right? 27, he's $20,000 over what he would give if he was doing the contract. It's 160,077. The contract said 140. And not for nothing, full disclosure, when I talked to Glenn before we had our meeting last, or excuse me, to Jeff, whereas I, I, I put out there like a year probation or a year, you know, getting used to it, because this is new to the town. This is new to us. It's new to me. It's new to, whatever. And it was an emphatic no. And I realized that you guys sat down and you had a conversation, hammered some stuff out, but I mean, so we're looking at, so, I mean, I don't know what the base price or the base salary for the paralegal would be, but you know, there's 6% on top of those. So you're looking, we're going to be over 400,000 by 27. I mean, I, if it's 330 now, I mean, I just with retirement, et cetera, et cetera. So we just need to take all this into consideration because, I mean, you know, it's not like it's 135 now and we're going to wait on the COLA for 26 because he's not going to get a full year's salary. Right? You, you see where I'm going?
We don't generally give 6% COLA, but I, I'm following.
What was it? What was it? Okay. What was the COLA last, last year? What was the COLA? We did, they did approve a COLA. I, I remember.
He did approve a 6%.
So it was 6.
But there had not been COLA for any of the previous.
How many?
I, I think it was three.
I'm not.
Two, two percent essentially.
Okay.
For each year.
Full disclosure, as a gentleman who gets a COLA based on a bargaining agreement with a, a union that I don't even belong to, because I'm a non-bargaining unit, I'm not arguing the COLA.
Right.
There's definitely a cost of living problem. There's an inflation problem, et cetera. My point is when you factor in the COLA at the 6% that we gave last year, if that was to come up, this is just how it breaks down. That's all I'm saying. I mean, you know, and then again, I think Lisa said, there's no end date to this. There is no end date to this resolution, period. There's not a, hey, let's revisit in three years. Hey, let's revisit in four years. Let's revisit one. There's no end date period. So it's like.
Because the end date could be the day after tomorrow if we decide it's not working.
I get that, but it, it brings me back to what I said, and I, I guess I was told by a couple of people, I wasn't truly totally clear last time. The, the last thing that was, before we left, it was proposed was a six-month, which I, six months, whatever, you know, it still takes a 4-1 to, to terminate, right? So the six-month, there's no skin in the game, right? Because it takes 4-1. So if not, if four people up here aren't in agreeance, that, that the person, whether it's Jeff or Jimmy or Tom, is meeting the mark, or Suzie, sorry, I don't want to leave anybody out, right? Isn't meeting the mark, it takes four people, right? So there's no skin in the game, is, I guess is my, is my point. That, that's, I mean, I, I think there should be a revisit date or something. There's, I think there should be some kind of terminology in here that says, this gets revisited. You know, maybe there's a, there, there's a, there's a term in here that says, you know, you have this kind of anonymity to, 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 to penalty for a year. And then after that, we're going to revisit in three because basically you entered into opening contract. So until you get four people to agree up here, or Jeff gets tired of us griping at him, he's in perpetuity. That's my only thing, because the charter says it's got to be a 4-1. It's not a 3-2, it's a 4-1, right? Super majority, correct? Am I correct, Todd?
You are correct.
Okay. Those are my two cents.
Are you done with your two cents now?
Term of less.
Okay. Todd?
So as a county employee, when do they revisit you? Do they revisit every two years or five years? Or you're an employee and you have your job as long as you're doing a good job? Right? That's how it works as an employee. And that's what this is. This is making him an employee, not under a contract.
It doesn't take a 4-1 vote to, 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 to take me out of where I am. It does, it, it, that's, that, that's the issue, Todd. And that's what I'm trying to get at. It's not like he gets a, he gets three write-ups and a bad review and it's called, okay, that's it. You're, you're terminated, you know, that's, you know, it's still up to four people sitting up here, whether it's the five of us still sitting up here or in March, it's, it's two more people are sitting up.
I'd be willing to bet it's harder to get rid of you than us to get rid of him with your county job, right?
I'm not also, I'm not, I'm not, you're bringing something in that doesn't belong. I'm not a contract employee, right? I'm not a, I am a prof- a licensed professional, but I'm not a contract employee. So, you know.
He's not going to be a contract.
But the charter states he's got to be a contract employee. How, how, how do you do that without doing a resolution or a referendum to change the charter, Todd? You can't do that.
But it, but he's not under a contract. It's a resolution. It's a simple, a very simple agreement.
Doesn't it say at the end? It, it, I know it says something here about it, like it, it, it basically moves into a contract. It's the same, it's, it's, it's trying to meet the Glenn's words that we're trying to satisfy the contract without having a contract, basically, not quote unquote, Glenn, sorry. No quotes.
I mean, this is contract. There's no, no getting around it. This is an agreement. We've, we've taken a resolution and added a line for Jeff to sign and some language, this becomes a binding agreement.
Which is a contract. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, don't get me wrong, but a binding agreement is a binding agreement.
So Glenn, it, it doesn't say contract. What it says is the town attorney shall be employed under the terms and conditions deemed advisable by the town council, which may include an appointment of a law firm. That doesn't say contract.
The, the, the charter requires that the town attorney be hired by an agreement slash contract. Same words, same thing. And.
I just, I just, I just read the charter to you, Glenn. Shall be employed under terms and conditions deemed advisable by the town council. Doesn't say contract.
Let me, uh, let me go to the charter and pull that up because I think Jeff and I both read the charter and we both agreed that you have to have a contract. But give me a minute to find the charter.
Okay. I did have my light on before Todd, so.
Sorry.
Um, no problem.
Sorry.
Paying so much attention to Paul.
And yes, Paul, thank you for doing the math and the FRS, um, upper management, I'm sure I'm butchering that, um, is 33.24% contribution from the town. Um, and, uh, Mr. Kurtz's would be 3%. And Todd, I would, uh, point out to you that the manure thing, we've already spent over $13,000 with the current town attorney on. And I've questioned whether we can even legally ever implement that. And the sign ordinance by council from June of 24 was supposed to go back to ULDC with the suggested changes. And now we're looking at a new sign ordinance potentially with amortization that's going to potentially put back code enforcement on those signs for another five to seven years. So when we talk about postponed legal and we talk about how the town never moves forward because we keep revisiting stuff, this is the third meeting discussing Mr. Kurtz. And we've yet to actually successfully implement what we set out to do with a four-to-one vote, which said, put it out to advertisement. So my two cents.
Anybody else have anything they want to say? Marge, anything you want to say?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do, Ms. Standish.
Virginia Standish, 15410 North Ridge. So I'm just going to recap what I've heard come from you, council. Some of my comments can apply to any staff position. Basically, I've heard that other towns that have in-house counsel typically have populations of 50,000 plus. So our town has a population of less than 4,000 and we're going for in-house counsel. We've had discussion back and forth of what our charter says, whether it should be a contract or an agreement or what council decides. Uh, we all know that a contract is an agreement, but an agreement is not necessarily a contract. What has been presented here appears to be a never-ending agreement, as was pointed out. There's no end date. Excuse me? Wow. Could I get that contract? No end date. So obviously that needs to be revisited. Um, a four-to-one vote, again, another nightmare. Are we hiring in-house counsel as a staff person? Why is there no end date? My concern is the town seems to be declining to do due diligence. Again, this can apply to any position. Uh, my concern there is can the town be sued by others who may have wanted to seek this position because the town chooses not to do due diligence? There's mention of Mr. Kurtz having outside clients. Have those been presented? Is there any conflict? Is there any conflict with his teaching? As with any position, have any of his references been contacted outside of town? References, um, as any position would require? And what happens on day two? What are the costs? If day one, he's hired, great. And day two, he decides he's no longer working for us. That needs to be uh, explained to the public, not what we think might happen. We've, we've read this. So tell us what the end date is of this agreement or do we have a never, never-ending person in place? And really, again, the contract, you know, the charter says, it's ambiguous now what the contract, uh, the charter is saying. So it's a good thing we're having a charter review committee. And I would encourage you all to review more than the one topic that I've heard discussed. This just brings up a lot of concerns as, as to this, why there is no contract. Um, and I will share with you, I just have a lack of confidence. And again, this goes to any position. I realize council negotiates with vendors all the time. But when you're hiring a staff person that you have to deal with, it seems it's more appropriate for an outside HR person or attorney to be doing the negotiating. Ms. Grunche?
Cynthia Scrunchy, 15349, Collecting Canal. The simple definition of contract is an agreement between two parties. I mean, Glenn, you know, legally, what you're doing is you're negotiating contracts. Todd, I'm sorry, but I find it grossly inappropriate that you would be the person to negotiate with Jeff on this issue. I mean, it's, everything that you people do, does anybody know what the sunshine laws are? Does anybody know how many times you violate the sunshine laws in any given meeting? I reached out to you and Mr. Torsivia prior to this, expressing my concerns. I then sent Francine and Mr. Torsivia videos of you meeting privately with Jeff during the last town council meeting. And you know, it's, you haven't interviewed. You've got an ad out there running. You're, you're proposing that this town accept an open-ended contract with an employee with a less than acceptable history as an employee. You've said so yourselves. But you continue to ramrod this through and why? What's the rush? Just like you said, Paul, you're a hundred percent right and good for you for saying it. There's no rush. Mr. Torsivia is not leaving. And you know what? In the letter that I saw attached to the today's agenda, he gave his date based on this meeting. So if you do what's right and not go forward with this tonight, because there's absolutely no reason. You don't know so many of the details that you should know to enter into any kind of agreement. Contract with any employee or firm. But you, for some reason, this has got to be, got to be shoved down everyone's throats tonight. And that's what happens with this town. It's just, it's crazy. And that's why you have people like me and many other citizens. Crossing our Ts and dotting our Is because the attorney general is going to be contacted with this. You've got to start playing by the rules and not making them up as you go.
Mr. Torcivia, would you like to respond to the accusation that sunshine law was violated, just so that, um, we can have that on the record?
I said sunshine law was vi, has been violated in an ongoing places. No, no, no. If you, if you want to redirect, I will redirect. I said specifically that the sunshine laws have been violated on an ongoing basis, given councils. Actions, not just during, not just for this. You want a list? I'll be happy to send you a list. Glenn, I'll be happy to put together a list and it's going to be a long one. Thank you.
Thanks. Torcivia, would you like to please respond for the record to the allegation that Mr. McClendon was breaking sunshine law when he was, when he negotiated with Mr.
Mr. Torcivia, when I sent you that video of, of Mr. Kurtz leaving with Glenn, with Todd during the. No, you can, you can let me clarify, leaving with Todd during the last council meeting to. Address something in private along with, that is a violation of the sunshine laws.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Mr. Torcivia, would you like to respond to that, please?
No, I would not like to respond to that because I have no idea what individuals do privately. I don't know whether there's been violations or not. I, I'm not aware of any violations, but I can't.
The fact that he left during, no ma'am, I'm trying to clarify. The fact that he left during a council meeting. Glenn is a, a direct violation.
Thank you. Todd, would you please like to speak now?
Glenn, if I meet with Jeff Kurtz, just the two of us, is there a sunshine law violation? With me discussing anything with Jeff during a council meeting?
You, you can meet with the staff person, which Jeff is. You cannot meet with council members, right?
At any time about any subject, correct?
During a council meeting, Jeff.
During a council meeting, after a council meeting, at any time.
Yeah, I'll send you the law. I'll send you the statute.
Yeah, if you're, you're meeting with the staff person, which Jeff is, then you're allowed to meet with the staff person.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll send you.
Thank you very much. Any more public comments?
Ms. Succi.
And I do have the charter question, but I'll wait until after public comment.
Oh, the answer to Todd's question? Thank you.
Oh, sorry, FPL is telling me my electric's on.
The twenty-nine club has power.
It might go off again. So twenty-nine people, um, Cassie Succi. So, um, I. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that disturbed me. First of all, um, I, I agree with Paul on a lot of things. Thank you. For reducing this down to some of the craziness that we've, we've had, but there is still a lot of problems with it, I think. And I think we're not doing our due diligence. You guys were elected to basically. Make sure you answer some of the questions that Paul brought up, making sure that we interview the other attorneys. This disturbed me when Glenn says, well, you know, we're a town, a small town, and this is kind of an experiment. I don't think we should be voting on an experiment that's going to set the bar. Of the cost of attorney fees higher than what it normally was. When we entered into this, I remember Todd coming up when he was in the audience. You know, attorney fees are too high. They are too high. And that was, we got to lower the attorney fees. Well, doesn't seem like we're lowering them. It's now being raised to three hundred and fifty thousand. Yes, he has a salary of a hundred and thirty-five, but he's going up to the, what, special administrative category? In the FRS, which adds another forty-five thousand a year that the town is liable to pay. He doesn't get it directly. It goes to his FRS. So that's what, a hundred and eighty thousand. Um, we're going to have an outside firm and another employee with long-term benefits. So I just, I'm very concerned the fact that this was about reducing costs. And we seem to be, oh, what's okay. We're just going to raise the cost. We'll raise mileage. We'll raise the acreage assessment because we're going to raise the cost on the attorneys. We need to go through what you guys voted on and interview everyone. And I remember you saying, Todd. Uh, when you guys made that vote, perhaps Jeff will come up and he'll be a firm and he can, he can apply. And I remember you also saying, which I agreed with you, uh, firm has no liabilities, nothing. They can leave tomorrow. We don't have to pay FRS. We don't have to pay health insurance. So I don't think you're doing due diligence. And I don't think it's fair to the people that elected you up there. You need to slow down. You need to make sure you get all the questions answered. And I'm very concerned with it not having an end. I know it's, and I, I understand because I've, I've talked to Todd a little bit, um, but I'm still kind of confused. How is there no end? And then it's going to take four to one, which is a very hard hurdle to, um, achieve sometimes. So I'm very concerned about the cost and some of the other issues. And I would implore you guys to please slow down. Go through what you did, interview these other firms. Jeff put in for the interview as well. And if he comes out on top, then that's great. But I don't think Locks At Your Grove should be an experiment. And I was very concerned when Glenn described it as that because. We're a town of less than four thousand. I don't think we need to have all these absorbent costs. Thank you.
Any more public comments?
No, mayor.
Okay, Todd.
You know, when we got, when I was up here before and we got rid of Underwood Management, one of the issues was. Everybody was up in arms that we had a contract management government here. And they didn't like the fact that we didn't have control over it. HR was under Underwood Management. Nobody liked that. Everybody said, we need to have employees. We need to have employees. And the same people that were saying everybody should be employees and we shouldn't have contracts with firms, now we're saying the opposite. We shouldn't have an employee and we should have a contract with a firm. It seems ironic that the position has changed based on the circumstances like that. Instead of across the board, we should just have employees here, which is what has been happening over time since Underwood's gone. We've moved to more and more having in-house people as opposed to contracts. So just leave it at that. Thank you.
Paul?
Oh, Lisa had her light on.
Oh, did you have your light on first?
Sorry, Lisa.
Uh, yeah, Todd, I think that's an, a great comment. I, I went back and spoke with Dave Autry, one of our first council members and. Asked him why the super majority was chosen, um, as, as a means of, um. Getting rid of, um, people that are no longer functioning for the town's purposes. And as. He recalled it, uh, being with contract management, they wanted to encourage these contract, uh, companies to apply and give them some stability. And I think when we did switch over to the employee model. That that was possibly something we should have considered at the time, switching to a simple majority vote and a super majority to hire. So the bar was higher for people to get in the door versus out of the door. And, and lastly, um, I do have another question for Mr. Kurtz. Uh, in your capacities as town attorney previously, I think you, you said that you were always part of a legal firm providing. Or were you hired in-house before?
Um, the Delray Beach experience was in-house, um, and, uh. The plantation and the village of Wellington experience was as, uh, members of the firm.
Okay. And Delray was back in the nineties, I think, was your timeline?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nineteen eighties, six to ninety-three, ninety-four.
So given your, your association with the town to date as an employee under the town manager. Do you anticipate any challenges functioning independently, um, from the town manager as the legal counsel to the town council?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Paul?
I'd just like to revisit. Isn't one of the complaints, the reason that we want to get away from the contract model? And their in-house HR and everything was because of the rampant nepotism that was happening within that contract model, the contractor that we had hired, the vendor we had hired to do it. And there was a lot of shortfalls happening that were getting swept up.
I think it was a, a lot. That was certainly.
Yeah, but I, but yeah.
Rampant nepotism, I believe it was just the.
Think of, see, you'll see. Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, it was, but I guess my, my point is, is, is it wasn't, it wasn't the contract management. I think it was the contractor.
Well.
And I think the, 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 the easy fix, the fix of the, the, the fix was, I'm not saying I want to, let's go back to contract management. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying you're, you're asking why, why, you know, this is different, whatever. I, I think, you know. Yeah, there is a, a certain spot that, you know, and I'm not saying that in-house is bad. I'm not saying in, I'm, I'm just, I'm just going down and I'm getting. You know, just all, again, the shotgun wedding type of scenario that we're dealing with here, you know. There's no end date. There's no, it, you know, and. Um, that's where I'm at. It's, it's not that I think one model is better than the other. I get what you're saying. We said it now, but you know, when you add in the FRS and all that stuff, it bumps over four hundred thousand dollars for the first year.
No.
No?
No.
What's, uh?
Can I just interrupt your thought? Yeah, question, just to ask a question. Francine, can you give me some idea of how many people have responded? How many firms have responded for, um, next Monday night? Or is it Monday or Tuesday, whatever, next week?
Monday.
Monday night.
Each firm was called and only one responded. With a message and that was, um, our special magistrate. Who said that their practice didn't have the capacity right now, um, to be the full-time counsel. And they loved being our magistrate, but haven't really had any calls or questions, no emails, nothing. I mean, if I missed it, it wasn't a lot.
So we have no, nobody who's planning to come next Monday and present at this time?
Not that I know of, but I don't know because the deadline is Friday at five P M.
Okay. And is that the kind of standard for people to come in at the, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with, um, with government, um. Hiring that way, uh, uh, for us. Is that, that's pretty standard?
I think, I think most people do it the day before, the day of.
The day before? Okay. All right. Thank you.
That's all. I just wanted clarification on that.
If, if you remember right, I asked if we could do both the same night, right? And Glenn recommended against doing that. He said that was not a good plan to do. So that's how we ended up with year tonight and firms next Monday or whatever it is. I would have preferred to do them the same night, but Glenn recommended against that.
Would you like a motion?
Well, and.
Paul?
Uh, I mean, listen, I, I, yeah, I mean, I, well, it's just, it's forty-seven thousand, plus or minus a couple hundred bucks. For the first year FRS. So just for argument's sake, let's take that half for the paralegal, right? So you got another, so that's one ninety, plus another half, that's twenty, that's two ten. Then say they're getting seventy a year, just for round numbers. I'm not saying whatever, but you know, two ten, that's seventy, it's two eighty, right? That's just with the FRS. That's not with, with insurance and all this other stuff. You follow, you follow what I'm saying? That's what I'm saying. You're taking that three thirty and you're getting way close to four hundred just in the first year.
Keep in mind, we're getting double the amount of man-hours of what we're paying now, right? So what we're paying now is about fifteen hundred hours is what we paid Glenn's law firm last year. With two employees here, we're going to be at three thousand man-hours. Surely we're going to get a lot more work in production out of double the amount of hours. If not, we're going to have a problem, right?
And this is how government works, right? You put in more hours, you get more output, right? That's historical.
That's.
I'm from the government. I'm here to help.
I'm not saying we're going to get double the amount. I'm not saying that, but we're going to double the amount of hours. Surely we're going to get more stuff done. And we have a lot on the plate to get done. So I think Glenn has his answer.
I'm sorry, Glenn, you had something that you wanted to contribute?
Yeah, so the, um, the charter, it, it's a little harder to find because it doesn't just say under the attorney. Let me read you a couple of sentences. So it's in section four. And paragraph one says designation of charter officers. The town manager and the town attorney are designated as charter officers. And then, uh, you go down to section two B. It said, two C, rather, it says the compensation of the charter officers, town attorney, town manager. Uh, shall be fixed by the council through the approval of an acceptable employment contract. So the charter does say that you have to have an employment contract with your manager and your attorney. Hence why we took the resolution. And again, my understanding, you know, from talking to Jeff was that. Council member McClendon, he said at night, prefer not to have a contract, but the charter requires one. So that's why we took. You know, I'll almost say the resolution and turned it into contract light so that there is a contract because Jeff is signing it and that does become an agreement. Between the town and, and Mr. Kurtz.
So, so I guess section four A is kind of a conflict, right? Because four A kind of lays it out different.
Put that on the charter review list.
But generally, when you have a conflict, you go the more strict, Todd. It's how conflicts work.
And so, so four A says the town attorney shall be employed under terms and conditions deemed advisable by the town council. And two B, or rather, two C says that compensation shall be fixed through an acceptable employment contract. So you are setting the terms and conditions under for D, for, uh, A, the terms and conditions. But it also says you have to have an agreement. Hence the reason why we turned the resolution into an agreement. Now, again, if you want. To go back to an agreement, agreement, kind of like Jeff proposed before. We could put the same terms that are in the resolution in a document. I don't think you need to do that, but if you want to, you can. But I just wanted to be clear, this is an agreement. I want anybody to walk out of here thinking this is simply a resolution and we can repeal the resolution next week. You know, this is an agreement.
And because he's hired only as an employee, he's still, because he's the town attorney. Because he's the town attorney is a charter officer, so that's where the super majority then kicks in to get rid of them. Uh, it should, should we decide to do that? And that's kind of a, a little bit of a holdup. So the comfort level of having it be just an employment agreement as opposed to a contract. For lack of a better term, but employment agreement as opposed to an employment contract, the comfort level of that really kind of. Just took care of the concern about the twenty weeks of severance pay. Um, but it doesn't really. Cover the, the concern about end date or termination or something like that. Am I accurate?
I think that's a good summary. A good summary.
All right. So do we address that? What do we do?
I thought coming out of a contract where he wasn't, we weren't bound by a contract was the way to go. I thought who could go, who could go against this, right? We're not bound with a contract anymore. We're not stuck with this, stuck with that contract and.
How, how are you not, it takes a four one vote, my friend.
Still take it even if you had a contract to get rid of it. If you had a five-year contract.
You're, you're trying, you're trying to sell it like he, like he's hiring on as an employee. He's, he's still a contract employee. If, if he's hiring on as an employee and he derelict in his duties, he gets, yeah, he gets, yeah, okay, as a charter officer. He's, if he's derelict in his, if he's derelict in his duties, Francine writes him up and sends him packing. That's the process. Well, I'm sure it's more involved than that, right? But I'm just saying ultimately, if he's just an employee. Right? And Jeff, I'm not picking on you. I'm just, I'm, I'm finding details, okay? The thing is, is if, if, if three of us feel that Jeff isn't meeting the mark, we're still short one person. You, Lisa and myself could stand up and go, Jeff, you haven't been meeting the mark. But if Anita's not buying in or Marge isn't buying in and doesn't, nope. Jeff's great. Guess what? We're out of gas in perpetuity because there's no end date.
That's, that's true of any charter officer.
I, I agree, but I'm just.
Yeah, but when the town attorney is an outside firm, the, the meter's not running because we can't agree. By bringing it in-house, the meter runs constantly by going outside law.
We have to, but going outside, we still have to have legal representation for things. We can't not use an attorney.
Yeah, but we're not using them every day and sending them on vacation and paying their insurance.
Glenn, I got a question for you. If three council members appear wanted to cancel your contract, how would that leave us with the fact that. You or whoever designated your firm right now is the, is the town attorney. How would that play out?
All right. So, so if I had not resigned, I would still be your attorney and it would take four of you to unwind that. And.
What, even if, even under contract?
Doesn't matter how it is that, right? The charter says it takes four.
Right. So we're in that position now. That's my point.
But we're not paying him any benefits or salary.
But we have to have a town attorney.
But we only have a town attorney when we reach out and say, hey, town attorney, do some work for us.
So, so, so that if you go to, uh, Attorney Jim next door and go, hey, listen, and you just leave, yeah, we have a contract with him, but we don't use him. You don't, you wouldn't be paying Glenn. You'd be paying, uh.
This other attorney couldn't represent the town unless we terminated him with four people and made this other person the town attorney. It would still take four people to get rid of.
You can't have multiple representation?
No, you can have one town attorney.
Then how?
You can't have 10 town attorneys.
How can you not?
Because it's a charter officer. One town attorney, and you can have five underneath that, but that town attorney is the one that dictates.
Yes. I, I think you're, you're apples and oranges though, Todd. You're saying it takes four votes. We're agreeing that it takes four votes. But it's not taking four votes to get rid of somebody that's a salaried on the.
We wanted to get rid of Glenn right now. It takes four votes.
It doesn't matter. He's under contract, but he cost us zero until we say, give us an X, give us a Y.
So we shut down the town? We would have to shut down the town because we can't approve any contracts or have him do anything, which means no more contracts go out the door because we're stuck with Glenn because we don't have four people and we're not going to use them. We're not going to pay him. But he's not going to approve any contracts. So the town effectively stops immediately.
Yeah. That's a conflated argument. It's, it doesn't, doesn't hold water. Sorry.
Glenn, am I wrong in that? He's got his hand up.
So I don't know if you remember, but a couple of months ago I did a, a memo about legal analysis and fees. And, and I suggested, because you do have the charter requirement of the four votes, that for the two charter officers, whether it's me, whether it's Jeff, whether it's Francine, no matter who it is, I always recommend a short contract because otherwise you do have the four vote conundrum. If, if I'm the employee, if I'm the outside contractor, I love the four votes. I could have stayed with you guys probably for another 10 years because to get four votes is very difficult. So, um, you know, that's why you have a contract that's one year or two years. So at the end of the contract term, the contract is over. The contract protects you. Jeff's not going to like me saying this. Francine's not going to like me saying this, but my obligation is to you as the council. And if the council wants to maintain some level of control over who is your town attorney or who is your town manager, who is your charter officer? The best way to do that is to have a shorter term contract where every year they need to get three votes to stay employed as opposed to four votes to get fired. And that, that is, gives you the most control you can have under this system that the, the founders of the town set up with the four votes. So that's why I think Mr. Coleman was talking about, you know, whether he called a probation at the last meeting or one year at this meeting. Whether I was suggesting that when we were talking about Francine's contract, it's the same concept. You know, every time you do a long-term agreement, you have that person until four of you can agree. And let's face it, four out of five people in any setting is very difficult to get to that number.
It's an 80% hurdle.
It's a high hurdle. And again, the town, you have that in your town charter in a few places and for good reason. So if you want to maintain a level of control, the best way to do that is to give yourself that control in the contract because once the contract ends, the employment ends, the contract ends. And that person is no longer the town attorney or the town manager. They then have to basically re-addition, re-ordination for the job. I, I have a, a city where every year they have to vote to approve my contract. And if they don't, they don't. If they don't have three votes, I don't want to be there.
How many years is your current contract, Glenn?
It's open-ended. That's why, if, if, if I hadn't resigned, then I would be your attorney until four of you said goodbye and.
You have an open-ended contract right now?
Yes.
So we're going from the same to the same, right?
Excuse me one sec. Excuse me one second. Thank you. Um, Marge is not there any longer.
Oh.
Um, do you know whether there's a problem? I just want to get that taken care of before. Okay. And see what's going on with that. Okay. I'm sorry.
Good catch.
It was two minutes ago. Yeah. I was waiting for Glenn to stop talking.
I can't read the names up there. I just see, I see a G sign. That's Glenn. I'm not sure who. I'm not sure who the person on the right is.
Anyway, Glenn was talking.
I don't know who that is either. Um.
Sorry, Glenn. We're just pausing for a minute because we lost Marge. I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. But you were saying, if you have a thought to finish, if you can just give us one minute to, um, to see what happened. Valerie's checking into it. Okay?
Understood.
Somebody's trying to call in.
That's her.
Yeah.
Marge, if you can hear us, please unmute.
It's freezing cold in here.
It is.
Running through the rain.
Yeah, I have a, I have a cost saver. That's crazy.
And I think it's still raining. Can't tell.
Yeah.
Sounds like it.
Make it 78 here.
The radar looked like it was, uh.
It's going to end anytime soon. Hopefully the power stays on.
I was trying to wait it out to get here and then I was just like, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, you and me both want to run out in the thunder, mind me.
And he would, good to get here at 4:30. Then we only got wet. Just sitting there waiting.
She's on, but she's, she's, uh.
There's a phone number up there.
Yeah. Yeah, that's her. It's her. She's on, but.
Yeah, I do. I don't see her little green hat anymore. Does that mean she's not there?
She's in by phone now.
She's versus computer. Oh, she's a call-in now?
Yeah.
She's a call-in. That's her phone number.
But can we hear her?
No, she's muted.
She has to unmute for us to be able to hear her and I hope she hears us telling her that.
Marge, you need to unmute for us to be able to hear you. Can you do that?
Write a sign that says, help me. Unmute.
Yeah, but. Okay. If not, if you could use that chat and tell her to unmute.
I don't think you'd see chat on a phone.
No, there's a little chat.
I know. I don't.
But she's on, she's via phone.
It's very hard to use Zoom in a call-in format.
I see your point.
Thank you, COVID. We all know way too much about Zoom.
Where we all call all of them Zoom. Somebody, somebody did good.
Well, I guess what I'm hearing is that we want to continue considering Jeff's until, uh, or at least two people want to continue hearing, uh, Jeff's until next week when we hear the other ones. Is that what I'm hearing? Is that the consensus?
That is my position. Yes. Thank you.
Well, and, but Glenn had a reason for it, why he didn't want to, why he recommended against that.
Uh, well, do you want me to wait for Marge or should I go ahead and?
Well, we're, we're hoping Marge can hear us and just not respond. We see that she's here. So we're hoping she can hear us. And if we're not going to vote on anything, then we, we can
Right. So.
Wait to have her be, yeah, we can, she, as long as she can hear the conversation, go ahead.
So there were a couple of reasons that I made this suggestion a week or two ago. First, you know, you had already, uh, talked about hiring Jeff and it sounded like there was simply an issue about terms. It seems like there was a majority that wanted to bring on board Jeff. He needs to negotiate terms. The second reason was an outside firm, they're going to apply, they're going to look at the last couple of minutes, the last couple of meetings online. They're going to see what's going on with the town. They're going to see that you're interviewing an in-house candidate. They're going to be reluctant to apply when they, and it takes time and money to put together a proposal, until they know whether that in-house candidate has been selected or not. As Francine said, the deadline isn't until the 25th. I wouldn't be surprised if there are any firms that are interested that after tonight's meeting, if you select Jeff, they're going to say, okay, we're not going to waste any time on it. They pick somebody. If you don't select Jeff, then they're going to put together their proposal and have it in usually in the deadline. Cause most people that respond to RFPs, whether it's a lawyer or an engineer, they put it in the last day, maybe the day before, but usually the last day.
That's kind of standard, huh?
Yeah.
That's pretty standard. And everybody's worried that somebody else is going to see their proposal before, you know, uh, cause technically their public records and you get it to hold competitive issues. So everybody waits till the last minute or at least the last day to submit their proposals. Um, the, the.
But there's nothing wrong with considering him with the others on Monday night. Am I correct or am I wrong?
You, you can, you can do that. Again, that you're, you're just, at this point, everybody else, every other firm will probably watch this meeting, meeting and weigh their chances and say, okay, do I throw my hat in the ring or not? But you can certainly do that, but.
All right.
I'll go back.
Asking the question. Lisa, Lisa has a question.
I have a question. I'd like to propose a motion.
I'm sorry. Does anybody else have any questions for Glenn? Glenn, was there anything else that you needed to edify? I'm sorry. I thought Lisa.
My only suggestion, my only advice, no matter it's Jeff or a firm manager, whoever the charter officers, that you limit it to one year, maybe two at the most. But if you don't do that, you are ceding control that you have as a council. You're giving up your level of control.
You mean even with an outside firm, write the contract for just one year?
Sure.
Unlike you who we had an open-ended contract with?
Right, right. That's, that's what you all had. I mean, I wasn't going to say.
That we should have never had an open-ended contract with you? Is that what you're saying?
I would not recommend that. If I, if I was your attorney at the time, I would have made the same recommendation.
Look, if I was proposing a contract, I'd leave, I'd propose an open-ended contract as well. It's good business, right?
Very interesting.
Absolutely. But I mean, it's up to the people sitting up here to go, uh, we're not doing open-ended. We're doing this.
Right. Well, apparently they didn't do that at that time.
So just think about that, no matter who you select, i- if, if the council wants to maintain some level of control over your charter officers, that is the best level of control that you can have is, is the term of the contract so that every year, two years maybe, you at least have the opportunity for three of you, a majority to decide if you want to continue the relationship or not.
Okay. And the same thing would apply with a contract, um, with a firm as, as you're suggesting applies to. Like if we make it a one-year contract with Mr. Kurtz or a firm, either one, doesn't matter. At the, at the end of a year, it takes three to renew the contract and four to terminate.
Yes.
The contract ends regardless of whether the, the contract ends. So either the contract ends or three to renew is what I'm saying, Lisa. Three to renew. Or four to terminate at any time during the period, during, during the course of it, but three to renew.
Three to renew, otherwise during the term. It would take four to terminate during the term.
Right. And three to renew for either scenario.
Exactly.
Okay.
No, that, that's.
Every year.
Correct.
Every year.
We do this every year.
You would be going through this for a month and so.
We go through this on a monthly basis with other stuff. I mean, this is, I mean, this is.
Every year.
I have a question.
Spend four, four meetings on this. If I, and, and I'm going to be bold because I've been quiet here. And this is the, the, if I was the town attorney, the first thing that I would tell you with respect to any issue. And you talked about wanting to make meetings more efficient. I'll need to start off with a motion to approve. You don't need to, the maker of the motion doesn't need to believe that they're going to vote in favor of the motion. But you guys sit around and you never get to the point of a vote. So respectfully, in the future, um, you need to make a motion to approve. You get a second for it and you vote it up or down. Um, because you guys have been here an hour and 20 minutes and I don't know that you've convinced each other of anything.
Well, that being said, I, I, I always thought proper rules were there's a motion, a second, then there's discussion. But the way that this is always run, even sitting from out there, it's, all right, let's talk about this in nauseam. And then we're going to, then we're going to vote on it.
It's actually happened both ways. Excuse me? Mayor, it appears that the vice mayor is back on. I don't know if you want to try to check in with her.
Marge, are you there? Can you hear us? Hello, Marge? She's still mute. All right. So Lisa, go ahead and make.
I'd like to make a motion that, um, we move forward to taking Mr. Kurtz's agreement here and creating an official employment contract with a term that we all agree to, which I don't know what it'll be, to be considered at the Monday night meeting along with any other applicants at the time.
So you're wanting to see Jeff's contract at the Monday night meeting? That's what you're saying?
I don't think we've, any of us have said no to the contract content as it is been negotiated by Mr. McLennan, but I think that it's a question of it's not in a contract form. It doesn't have a deadline. You know, I think those are the concerns there. I, I do agree that Glenn's point was not to hire Mr. Kurtz as in-house tonight. It was to negotiate the terms, discuss them, and then discuss another potential applicant at the 28th. He did not want those occurring on the same evening. And that's how I recall it is how he presented it this evening. So I just make a motion to carry forward this to Monday night's decision that we've already set a deadline for potential applicants.
Then Jeff is free to come with any kind of changes or whatever.
Sure.
He wishes, right?
I mean, he's.
I mean, that's all I've ever asked.
Advantage so far. Why not continue?
That's all I've asked for from the first day we started talking about this was we need to advertise RFP style and.
I know. You're the one that brought up the due diligence.
Yeah. So.
So I, I'm with you.
I'll second it.
Okay. Can we hold for one second? I'm trying to fucking get the vice mayor on the line.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Hi, Vice Mayor. It's Valerie. So I have you on speaker. Um, there is a motion on the floor from Councilmember L. Ramey, which was just seconded by Councilmember Coleman. Um, I wrote this down quickly, so correct me if I'm wrong, but it's to take Mr. Kurtz, um, the resolution form agreement and make it as an actual agreement contract to be considered at the next, um, meeting on Monday with the other applicants at that time. And I got a thumbs up from, from Councilmember L. Ramey that I got that correct. Um, would you like to cast your vote?
Thumbs up.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess we're doing a roll call vote.
So you got Mark, you got the vice mayor.
We have an I.
I am a council member C2, I.
Paul?
I.
No.
I. Okay. Passes forward to them.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll keep you on the line. I'll meet you though for now.
Okay.
Do you want a motion to adjourn?
Uh, I do have one announcement.
Yes, please.
Uh, we are moving the first budget public hearing from September 2nd, 2025 to September 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Um, this was just decided a couple of minutes prior to this council meeting. So we will be updating our calendar on the website. But if you have any questions, please, uh, contact the town clerk's office and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, one, one clarification.
Yes, sir.
Unless you tell me otherwise, what I will do is I will work with Mr. Kurtz to put together an agreement similar to the one he had prepared before, but recognizing the things we talked about tonight and a standard agreement for an outside firm. And both of those will have a, uh, I'll put a one-year term. You can always change that. So no matter who is being selected, you have that option. And I'd probably put something in there like a 30-day or 60-day before that time to automatically renew, or you could renew it, you know, some renewal option. So you're not going through um, months and months of discussion. Is that acceptable? Do you want me to go down that path or would you rather I not?
Consensus, please?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yes, that sounds fine. Marge? Mr. Tersivi is going to rewrite another contract. I, can we just use the same one and scratch through and not accrue a lot more legal fees since we've already now written this contract twice? I sure would like to keep those legal fees down.
Me too.
So how about, how about if we just work with what we have and add a sentence or two to it and, and see if we can't keep this under an hour? What do you think?
That was my intention was to take our standard.
Oh, that's great. Okay. That's perfect.
So I just, I just heard not to exceed an hour. That's what I heard. Did you, you heard that too?
I will do my best as, as quickly it is we can.
Not, not your best, not to exceed an hour is what was said.
It's for the record, Glenn. You're stuck.
It's on the record. Okay.
Keep it under an hour of legal time. Uh, I agree.
All right. Marge agrees too. We have consensus of under an hour. Okay. Uh, then I guess I just need a motion to adjourn since this is a special meeting and I'll see everyone on Monday night. Second? Paul? All in favor?
Bye, Marge.
Call you tomorrow. Have a good night today.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No, I hope not.